Good morning. I'm going to call this RPC meeting to order Friday, November 20th, 2020, and I will have Debbie call the roll.
Joan Dykstra?
Here.
Mayor Marlin. Charles Smith.
Here.
Tammy Frühling-Vogus.
I got it.
Patrick Brown.
Here.
Steve Summers.
Here.
Jim Goss.
Here.
Dennis Roberts. Mayor Finan. Will Kyles. Katina Wiltshire.
Present.
And Anna O'Gee. We have six right now.
And we need how many, Debbie?
We need one more to make.
Okay.
We have two more than just joining. Major Marlin, join, and Major Frühling-Vogus, join.
Okay, then we are quorum.
And Councilman Kyle has just joined as well.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, William.
Okay, does that mean I can drop off as Mr. Goss?
Yes, sir, you may drop off.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all, and have a happy Thanksgiving. Appreciate it. I'm sorry to drop off on you. Thanks.
See you, Jim.
Life happens. All right, so Debbie, you say with Tammy and Will, we have, we're good to go?
Yes, we are.
All right, we have called order. We have had the roll call. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Some moved. Wiltshire.
Member Summers, second.
Any discussion or corrections? All right, will the clerk call the roll?
Yes. Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah, present.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Roberts? Finan? Kyles?
Yes, here.
Wiltshire? And Alwin. Thank you.
All right, next, we have audience participation. Is there any audience participation? Hearing none, let's move on. We have minutes of the RPC draft, meeting minutes from August 28th, 2020. To get it on the tables, there are motion to approve.
Some moved. Diane Marlin.
Back here. Wiltshire.
Are there any corrections or discussion? If not, will clerk call the roll?
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going into some business. We have the consolidated financial reports. To get it on the table, do I hear a motion to approve the consolidated financial report for October 31st, 2020?
I'll make a motion, Wiltshire.
And a second?
Second.
Kyles? All right, Betty?
Sure. So, as you can see here, we have a fund balance as of the end of October, just slightly over $10 million of note. However, we have about $1.4 million in receipts that we have received and have turned over to the Treasurer's Office, but that have not yet been posted to the county's general ledger. So, our fund balance is actually higher than what's stated here because of those receipts. Our receivables are slightly over 1.4 million as well, and funding continues to flow even during this pandemic. So it's a positive fund balance here.
All right, are there any, is there any discussion or questions for Betty? All right, hearing none, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin? Smith?
Yes.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Kyles?
Yes.
And Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in votes, yes. I ran to get my cup of coffee, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, to get it on the table, do I, number six, do I hear a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for October 2020?
I'll make a motion to list and place on file the bills for 2020.
All right, and a second?
Wiltshire.
A second, Tammy.
All right. Okay, discussion. Elizabeth?
Sure. So this level of bill processing is very typical. However, the level of client services despite the pandemic continues to be very strong. So there is an increased volume, particularly with regard to energy assistance services. But all charges are appropriate, and there is nothing unusual to report at this time.
All right, are there any questions for Betty, or any comments?
Betty, this is Will Kyles. I probably should have asked this in the last, a, I should have asked this in the last item, but it's kind of, it connects. Are there any opportunities as we have, are there any more additional opportunities with our fund balance, with the amount of money that we have in our reserves, to be able to create any emergency programs for, to increase our assistance for energy, for housing, for things along that nature, and also to help combat some of these issues that we're facing in our community like gun violence? I mean, so maybe the topic isn't really that. It, that's what I would be looking for, but I'm wondering if there's any way to do that, because right now, I know that both cities and the county, in many ways, is struggling to do a lot of those, from a personal standpoint, from a city standpoint, and just in general, that's just, that's my question.
Let me take that, Betty, or you want to answer?
Yes, please.
I think, Councilman, thank you for the question. The issue, I think, is that most of our funds are restricted in terms of the grants that we operate here, the RPC. So when she says fund balance, it's, these are really funds that are associated with the grants that we receive from both the federal and the state government, which have specific purposes for us to serve the community. So, but we certainly can look at opportunities for grants that can address some of those community challenges that you just outlined in your question.
Yeah, thank you. I know that, yeah, from a restrict that we have, from a best standpoint, we have to definitely, you know, direct those dollars, and for a lot of those dollars, they're already spoken for. I just wanted to put it out there to see if we can.
Yeah, we can definitely. I know there's, there are a lot of opportunities. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
I think Will. Is he on mute?
No, I'm here. I just, I'm sorry about that. I thank you for the opportunity to, I know a lot of those dollars are spoken for. I just wanted to know if there was an opportunity to be creative, particularly in this time. That's all.
Sure. I can follow up with you too, Councilman, but I know there are some grant opportunities at the federal level to deal with some of the community issues that you outlined. So we can touch base maybe after the call.
That works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Is there any other, are there any other comments or discussion? If not, we have a motion to place on file the list of bills, and will the clerk call the roll?
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Goss? He left. Roberts? Mayor Finan? Kyles? Wiltshire? And? Alwin. Alwin, thank you.
All right, next, we have an action item, approval of the Head Start, early Head Start, and early Head Start expansion continuation funding applications. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
Some moved, Wiltshire.
Yeah.
Second by Smith. All right, any, Dr. Solomoyo, do you have any discussion, comments or discussion?
Yes, I will, to our Director of Early Childhood Education, to present these action items. So, Brandy?
Good morning. It's that time of year again to submit our continuation funding application grants to the Office of Head Start. This funding is for the Head Start, early Head Start, and early Head Start expansion grants for the year March 2021 through February of 2022. In your packet, you should have received the budget summaries, the enrollment by program options and schedules, the continuous quality improvement plan, and the updated community assessment. As the positive COVID-19 cases continue to rise within Champaign County, the program will maintain the five centers at limited capacity with expanded virtual learning options as necessary. Also, we will continue providing home-based services and partnering with six family childcare providers to offer additional program options for supporting families' needs. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the inability to receive the normal volunteer hours and organizational contributions, our program is requesting a waiver for all of the required 20% non-federal share. The Office of Head Start is allowing programs the option to request a waiver for the non-federal share based on emergencies or disasters, because organizations may not be able to provide the usual contributions. At this time, I recommend approval of the early Head Start, Head Start, and early Head Start expansion continuation funding applications, so that we can continue providing needed services within Champaign County.
All right, does anyone have any questions or comments for Brandy?
I just have a comment. I, this is Wiltshire. I just want to say that Brandy and her team never ceases to amaze me when it comes to wrapping around and meeting the needs of our most vulnerable families in our community, communities. And especially during a pandemic, they have not missed a beat. The resources they provide on social media and that out there in the community, feeding and just wrapping around families in ways that are meaningful. I just, I just want to thank you for your service and your work.
Thank you, Katina. I appreciate that.
All right, any other comments or questions for Brandy? All right, hearing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Goss? Roberts? Mayor Finan? Kyles?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
And Alwin. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. All right, next, we have the approval of the family priority list for 2021 through 2022. Is there a motion to approve the family priority list as presented? Is there a motion by?
Some moved.
Summer's moved approval.
And Katina, did you second that?
Yes.
All right, and Brandy, discussion?
Certainly. As required by the Head Start performance standards, the governing body and policy council members must approve the family priority list every year. This priority list is used to select families who are most in need in our community. Our team reviewed the form and determined no changes were required from last year's selection criteria.
All right, questions for Brandy? All right, hearing none, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yeah.
Goss? Roberts? Finan? Kyles?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
And Alwin. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Debbie. Next, we have approval of code of conduct in-kind donations. Do I hear a motion to approve the code of conduct in-kind donations as presented?
Some moved.
Does that check?
Yes.
All right, and second by?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? And Brandy, do you have any comments first?
Yes. The Head Start performance standards require me to obtain approval and signatures that you acknowledge the code of conduct expected of all members, and the in-kind donation that is collected for the time spent at meetings discussing Head Start matters. Your signatures are required for documentation purposes if you approve. In addition, we have, we've been notified, our program will have a focused Area One federal monitoring review this program year, and I will need your support as our governing body to participate in virtual interview, interviews with the monitors. In preparation for the interviews, I provided information about the eligibility, recruitment, selection, enrollment, and attendance, or otherwise known as URC, the leadership and governance training, which must be given to each governing body and policy council member, and the focus Area One protocol that will be used for the monitoring team. I'm hoping that one or all governing body members will be able to participate in, in the virtual interviews. If you have any questions about the information that I've provided, please reach out to me.
Any questions or comments for Brandy? All right, hearing none, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Goss? Roberts? Finan?
Yes, could you hear me that time?
I can hear you now. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Kyles?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
And Alwin. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Debbie. Next, we have approval of the personnel policy revisions, 8.2 vacation leave. To get it on the table, do we have a motion to approve the personnel policy revisions as presented?
Some moved.
Second, Marlin.
All right, discussion. Dr. Solomoyo, did you want to have any discussion on this or a comment?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I'll tee it off, and then Betty will provide more of the detail. But just as with many organizations, you know, with this pandemic, we've had to make a number of adjustments to how we, we work. And one of the challenges, I think, particularly for a lot of our staff, has been the ability to take time off. You know, we have, it's been very hard to take any time off, because we've been very busy, but also there's nowhere to go with this pandemic. And so based on the policy that we have in place right now, there is a limit on how much vacation time can be accrued before staff begin to lose vacation. And so we wanted to propose this personnel change as a temporary measure. We can review this again in 2021. But this would prevent our staff from losing vacation time, because they're not able to take time off due to work. Betty can give you a little bit more of the details in terms of how this is structured within our personnel policies. Betty?
Sure. So, thank you. So generally, we are able to carry over two years of vacation accruals. And so essentially, the proposal here is to add 10 days to every individual classification and those levels. And so, you know, as Delitzl pointed out, given the extraordinary circumstances of COVID-19, with so many of our staff with significant remote workloads, all the travel restrictions, the infection risk, and, you know, the remote learning opportunities for many of our staff that have children, and also mandatory quarantines, this will allow our staff to have a reprieve for 2021, and then have a full and fair opportunity to use that earned vacation time, and it'll provide that added flexibility. So we appreciate your review of these suggested changes.
Thank you, Betty and Dr. Solomoyo. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions? Katina, no, okay. Any other, any comments? All right, seeing none, I will have the clerk call the roll.
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith? Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Goss? Roberts? Finan?
Yes.
Kyles?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
And Alwin. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have approval of board resolutions for I.Grant applications. To get it on the table, do I hear a motion to approve board resolutions for I.Grant applications as presented?
Some moved.
Will, second?
Second, Wiltshire.
All right. Rita, would you like to comment first?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. Back in September, the PCD staff prepared three grant applications that were submitted to the Illinois Department of Transportation, to the Office of Intermodal Project Implementation. As part of each grant application, we had to submit an executed board resolution that will have to go in terms of certifying that we'll accept the grants if the grants are approved by I.G. Then basically, at this time, I'm asking the board to approve the board resolutions that can be submitted to I.G. as part of the grant applications. One of the requirements as part of the submission of the grants. One of the good things is that they allow us to submit these board resolutions after submitting the grant applications, because they know that we are on the pressure of the COVID pandemic. Then the three board resolutions are attached to the packet for you to see, and the summary of the three grant applications are part of the memo that you have in your packet. If you have any questions about the grant applications, please feel free to ask any questions at this time.
All right, questions or comments for Rita? All right, seeing none, I will have the clerk call the roll.
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown? Summers?
Yes.
Goss? Roberts? Finan?
Yes.
Kyles?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
And Alwin. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Debbie.
Brown is a yes.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right, next, we have approval of facility leases slash economic development loan transfers. To get it on the table, do I hear a motion to approve the lease, I'm sorry, facility leases and economic development loan transfers as presented? Let's see if I can talk here. Motion?
Some moved.
And second?
Second, Wiltshire.
All right, and Dr. Solomoyo or Betty?
Sure, I will introduce it again. So just to remind the commissioners, with our Head Start program, we do have site operations in five locations. We've got the location in Rantoul that we lease from the Village of Rantoul, the site in Savoy that we lease from the Village of Savoy. And then we also have the partnership with the Unit 4 on Neal Street in Champaign. And then there are two facilities, one in Urbana, and the one that we recently purchased in West Champaign, that were purchased through a third-party, not-for-profit entity called the Illinois Ventures for Community Action, but more specifically through its for-profit subsidiary, First Illinois Ventures. We presented this, I think, to you last year when we purchased West Champaign, and I think when the Urbana building was purchased before I started, the same level of transaction was done. And I think, as we've shared with you before, this was done because it's really in our best interest as a county not to own these buildings, and Betty will go through the more detail in terms of how this has been structured. But what we're presenting to you this morning is that the First Illinois Ventures organization will be dissolving here the next few months. And so we have been able to approach another not-for-profit that I actually helped to set up back in 1999, and I ran it until I came over here to Champaign. And this is an organization that is involved in affordable housing development. When I was there, we were able to do projects up to about $20 million. And so that board has agreed to take on both the loans as well as the leases. And so it's the same type of arrangement that we had with First Illinois Ventures. But to give you more specific details to this transaction, I will defer to Betty. Betty?
Sure. So as Delitzl has pointed out, we provided those economic development loans in 2019 and 2017, respectively, to acquire these two facilities to accommodate the need for expanded services in our Head Start program, and because both of these facilities were already designed as early childhood development centers with classroom space that was readily available. So the actual financing for this, as you recall, were, was through economic development loans from the Regional Planning Commission. And as you also recall, the actual financing of these projects, both of these, although it included a variety of complexities upfront, it was intended to eliminate that complexity in future years. For a number of reasons, it's most advantageous for us to continue the federal and state interest in the programming side of early child development, but not introduce any such interest in the facility ownership side. In other words, we don't want these to have any ties to federal funds, which they don't. So they're financed privately through economic development loan funds. So as Delitzl pointed out, the Illinois Community Action Development Corporation is organized in a similar in function to IBCA and its subsidiary FIB. The Illinois Community Action Development Corporation is willing to assume the debt to the RPC under the same terms and obligations based on the existing loan balances, which on the Country Fair property, which we just recently financed, that's about $2.2 million. And on the Mumford property, which we did in 2017, the principal balance is $1.25 million. It would, those loan agreements would have the same structure, 2.5% for 25 years, fully amortized. And then, of course, there would be a corresponding, parallel triple net lease. The triple net lease means that we would be responsible for all areas of repair, ongoing utilities, insurance, anything related to, to the rent. So the rental income, and that is paid for a combination of federal Head Start, federal early Head Start, preschool for all, and also our fee-for-service subsidy payments. So we request that the commission consent to the transfer of that real estate from FIB to Illinois Community Action Development Corporation upon the condition that they assume the full indebtedness and obligations owing to the commission based on the current loan balances and the assignment of rents under the same terms and conditions. And that they will acknowledge and agree to those obligations to the RPC as lessies will be due and owing for the remainder of these terms. So in other words, the financing structure and the parallel lease structures will be exactly the same as they are now, but under the auspices of a different not-for-profit entity.
All right, thank you, Delitzl and Betty, for that excellent explanation. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frühling-Vogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Goss? Roberts? Finan?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
Excuse me, Kyles?
Yes.
And Allwin. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. I'm sorry. Thank you, Debbie. Next, we have approval of FY21 final budget compensation adjustments. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
Obed. Mayor Smith.
Second?
Number Summers, seconds.
Thank you. Let's see, Dr. Sulemojo or Betty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, back in August, we presented to you the provisional budget for the Regional Planning Commission for FY2021, which excluded our compensation plan due to the fact that we were going through a process of doing performance evaluations. And so today, November 20th, we're presenting to you the compensation plan, which will then complete our full presentation of our FY2021 budget, which will take effect January 1st. To go through the specific details of our compensation plan, I will defer to our CFO, COO, Betty Murphy.
Sure. So several things we'd like to recommend, a 2.5% increase to the non-bargaining unit salary ranges. I believe those were included in the packet and that covers both exempt and non-exempt position. This 2.5% increase to the ranges is consistent with the recommendations we receive from the Employers Association and allows us to move toward external equity and maintain our competitive position in attracting and retaining staff. It also takes into effect the availability of our funding. And so we want to make sure that those ranges are modest, but that we can continue to recruit qualified and talented staff. In considering the individual adjustments, RPC differs, as you know, from other units of government in that the overwhelming majority of our revenue is grant and fee-for-service based. We do not have a local tax source. So RPC in any given year, our revenue may change significantly. But again, during this year, despite the pandemic, we've experienced significant growth in both programming and associated revenue. And I think it's due to the very talented staff that we've been able to retain over the past year. So consistent with the annual performance review process and our continued focus on achievement and productivity, we are recommending targeted merit increases. And our merit awards, as in prior years, they are either merit-to-base, which are permanent increases that take effect January 1, or they are one-time lump sum merit increases that come out of the current FY20 budget. And we have budgeted for those one-time merit increases. Generally, one-time merit increases allow us to recognize those staff that have achieved a significant accomplishment during the year. Perhaps they are at the maximum of their salary range. They've exhibited superior performance, but their program budget may be more restricted. So we simply can't afford to give permanent merit-to-base increases. So those one-time merits will be awarded as a lump sum prior to the close of the fiscal year, which is December 31st. And those were included, as I mentioned, in the FY20 budget. We are asking for 76 staff to receive those one-time merit increases. And they range anywhere from $500 to $4,000. That is based specifically on performance evaluations and recommendations by our directors and program managers. With regard to the merit-to-base, we provided these guidelines for high performer, middle performer, and low performer. The moderate being 2.8%. And no one received the 4%. We've been very careful about that. Instead, we've awarded more one-time merits, understanding that FY21 may have some additional uncertainty. So it's a conservative approach to recognizing achievement. So in addition to approval of the FY21 budget, the FY21 salary ranges, our compensation adjustments are as follows. We've moved people to the new minimum of the range, which is 0.107% or $7,283. We've moved people to comparability in those new ranges, which moved 2.5%. That represents 1.41% or $95,878. We have merit-to-base is 0.54 or $36,529. And then merit one-time out of the FY20 budget in the amount of $108,450. The total 2021 pay adjustment excluding the one-times is 2.05%. So we request your approval of this salary administration plan and our FY21 budget.
Madam Chair, something I excluded in my intro to this, this does not include the CEO. This is just for the staff. So I know you and I had talked about that earlier this week.
Yes, thank you. All right. Any discussion, comments, questions? Yes, Deb. Mayor Finan?
Have you taken into account, as you plan for this, the possibility that your member governments may be requesting a reduction in the amount that they pay, as most of the member governments are cutting their budgets drastically? And, you know, so having funds, I'm not opposed to the raises, but I want to make sure there are funds available to pay them.
Yeah, I think that's why we struggled with this for a very long time in terms of how much we could project into 2021, understanding that, you know, the financial environment has changed so much for so many of the units of government. And that's why we think a modest pay adjustment of 2.05 is very conservative and it's far below what the Employers Association recommended for us because many of our positions are so much lower than comparable external units of government. But, you know, we still need to retain talented staff to continue to secure grant funds. So we think 2.05 is as conservative approach as we could come up with.
Okay. Yeah. And as I said, I don't disagree with anything you're saying about your employees or the compensation. My concern is having the funds available. And I know as we look at cuts at the City of Champaign, certainly what we pay our outside agencies will be also looked at. I mean, we can't cut, you know, 15% from all of our departments and then continue to pay outside agencies 100%. So I know that it's going to have an impact.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Steve?
Yes. I certainly support this and have two main reasons, particularly when you talk about the ability to remain competitive in the marketplace. I'm becoming more and more aware in terms of overall our county's position with regard to that. And it's imperative that we do remain competitive. The second point being that we do have minimum wage requirements that we are going to have to meet in the next few years. And we need to make some moderate movement in that direction so that when the time comes to hit that $15 threshold, we're able to do that without too much undue stress on the budget.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frulyn Bogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Goss? Roberts? Finan?
Yes.
Kyles?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
And Allwin. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next, we have Head Start, Early Head Start. We need a motion to approve the Head Start Management Report, including financials and service area reports on September 2020 as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Katina?
Yes.
All right. And who would like to explain this?
I will do that.
Oh, thank you, Brandy.
Yeah. In your packet of materials is the management report for September. I would like to highlight for you this morning the accomplishments the Early Childhood Division has made to support the children, families, and employees of our program. Since September, our team was able to open 28 out of the 40 classrooms from all five centers, as well as continue operating the home visiting program via Zoom and offering services through family childcare home providers. Our Early Childhood Division has over 100 employees on emergency federal medical leave due to the COVID-19 virus, which reduced our ability to open classrooms and increased capacity. Our team purchased 650 Amazon Fire tablets and worked out an agreement with Comcast for the enrolled children to access virtual lessons and videos. We recently received these tablets and hope to get them out to the families early next week. As of November 16th, we had a total of 234 children enrolled in in-person services and 192 children in virtual learning, which totaled 426 children across the program. The enrollment numbers are increasing each day, and we do continue to work towards meeting full enrollment of 666 children and pregnant women. The Early Childhood Division continued the food and educational supply distributions to ensure families continue to receive what they need. Families are surveyed weekly and provided support accordingly. Since March, we provided 63,135 healthy meals to 4,209 children, along with 75,120 diapers and 28,932 wipes for families who identified that need. We also continued posting community resources, virtual lessons, and wellness support on our Facebook group page. We're now over 417 members. In closing, I would like to recognize PNC Bank for their continued support to our program, children and families. In September, PNC sent five iPads to the Savoy Center for Child Use, supported meals for 819 children, and then donated in November 126 coats to children in need. We are so grateful for their support. I'm open to any questions you might have.
Oh, thank you. That's very impressive, very heartening. Any discussion, any comments, or questions? All right, seeing?
John, I have a question.
Sorry, Mayor Marlin.
Brandy, thank you for everything you've done. That's just amazing. So I wondered, what percentage, are you having in-person classroom attendance for the kids, or what percentage of the kids are virtual? And? Yeah. So in my report, I stated that we have 234 children who are in-person learning. So they are coming to school, they are participating in our classrooms. And then we have 192 children who are in virtual learning. Okay. All right. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, well, the clerk call the roll.
Before I call roll, could you tell me who seconded this approval? I did not hear that. I have Wiltshire as first.
Who would like to second that?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then Dykstra?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frulyn Bogus?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Summers?
Yes.
Goss? Roberts?
Yes.
Finan?
Yes.
Kyles?
Yes.
Wiltshire?
Yes.
And Allwin. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I'm gonna digress from motion first and go ahead with the program division update. So Betty, your update?
Sure. So we just completed several virtual fiscal monitoring reviews, one with the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, another with the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board for a police training program. We had all positive results, no compliance finding in any of our virtual monitoring visits. As Brandy mentioned, we are anticipating a comprehensive Focus Group One remote monitoring review of our Head Start, Early Head Start, and Early Head Start expansion grants in the next several months. So we are working collaboratively to prepare for that extensive monitoring review. This will be the first in some time, and it will look at all of our programs comprehensively for the last several years. So we are going to be prepared for that. We just completed contract negotiations with AFSME. Their members ratified the contract last week. It was submitted and approved to the county board last evening. That contract is retroactive to March 1, 2020, and terminates on February 28, 2023. And we're preparing, as you may expect, to close out the current fiscal year and begin new programming next year. Finally, our staff is participating in the customized design of the new Tyler, that the county is rolling out next year. We have nine months to prepare for implementation. We're also working collaboratively with Tyler Technologies to customize the Human Capital Management Module, which includes HR and payroll. So with our staff that exceeds over 355 employees that are solely grant-funded, it's important that we are able to be part of this process in designing and customizing these modules. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Betty?
I'm sorry?
I was just asking, I'm just gonna go down the road, any questions for you?
Okay.
All right. And seeing none, let's move on to Becky, Human Resource Director.
Good morning, everyone. RPC currently has 411 active employees, which includes 88 work experience participants. The Human Resources Department has been focused on several staffing strategies to attract, motivate, and retain qualified staff amongst the challenges presented by COVID-19. The management team is currently working strategically to fill 16 positions as soon as possible. Since early April, our team has been sticking true to our values to be a family-friendly organization by supporting our employees with the emergency family medical leave and paid sick leave while balancing the goals of the organization to deliver outstanding services to our community. We currently have 101 employees utilizing emergency family medical leave or paid sick leave for illnesses related to COVID-19 or necessary time off due to daycare or school closures. I would like to share with the commissioners a few key data points related to the emergency family medical leave and paid sick leave. Since April 1, 2020, we have 101 employees have been approved for emergency family medical leave and paid sick leave. These employees have used 10,326 hours of emergency family medical leave and paid sick leave. The wages associated with the emergency family medical leave and paid sick leave is approximately $90,000. During October, I am happy to report that the HR department successfully completed the annual DCFS audit for several of the Head Start sites and finished the annual comprehensive background checks for the Independent Services Coordination Team. Additionally, we wrapped up the annual performance reviews for all of our non-bargaining unit employees. The senior management team worked together to ensure our staff were up to date on the state of the RPC and hosted a one-hour Zoom meeting on November 18 with presentations from Dr. Sulemojo and the senior management team, where the employees were recognized for their hard work and dedication and commended on their support of our community during the challenging year of 2020. Over the next few weeks, we'll be working with the fiscal department to complete compensation adjustments for the bargaining unit and, of course, preparing for the WEOWA participants who will qualify for the state minimum wage increases of $11, which goes into effect January 1, 2021. As all RPC employees earn salaries above the new minimum wage, there will be no employees impacted by the minimum wage increase. Finally, I had the opportunity to collaborate with the Society for Human Resource Management, Illinois SHRM, and the Chamber of Commerce to offer another webcast on diversity, inclusion, equality, and belonging. The series of one-hour trainings went over very well with over 4,500 registrants throughout the state of Illinois, with many of them in Champaign County. The last training session, creating and setting your organizational DIEB vision, mission, and strategy, will be presented on December 12 from 11 to noon. Information about the webcast will be forwarded to the commissioners and several community leaders within the next couple of weeks. I would be happy to address any questions.
All right. Any comments or questions for Becky? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Becky. Lisa, Community Services Director.
Good morning, commissioners. We are continuing to provide the services that we've provided for many years in community services. You know, we've talked about we're, without a hitch, continuing to serve both in the community, in person, and virtually. A few highlights that we've seen with the pandemic, there's moratoriums. And we've been working to engage the community and educating about the moratoriums. and we've been working to engage the community and educating about the moratoriums and engaging households to continue to apply for our assistance. We have seen a lull in some of the applications, and that's concerning to us because we want to make sure to provide the assistance that will help them stay housed, keep their utilities on. And so we've been strategic in working creatively to get messaging out. We have a landlord forum later today to actually engage the landlords to partner with their tenants in completing applications for rent assistance and utility assistance. We are looking to do creative commercials, press releases, again, to educate about the moratoriums and what they mean and to make sure that we are assisting the households across Champaign County to stay housed and to keep their utilities on. During the, since July, the end of July, when the light heap season started, we've served a total of 4,341 households through the end of October. With our COVID relief, we've been able to serve 127 households, 332 individuals. So those are some highlights of the work that's been going on most recently on top of what we do day-to-day. And I'm happy to also take any questions that you may have.
Yes, Diane Marlin.
Thanks, Lisa. We were happy to hear about the Ameren shut-off moratorium, but, and we have been trying to direct people to lie heaps. So it's kind of disappointing to hear that there's a lull in applications, and it's also very difficult to reach the people who've had their service disconnected. Deb, Finan and I are having a call at 10 o'clock with Carly Combest from Ameren. And one of the things we've requested, you know, is a list of the people who were disconnected from mid-September through mid-November. But then the question is how to best reach those folks to encourage them to to get reconnected and get assistance that they'd be eligible for. And, you know, we hope to do a mailing to those in Urbana. But I'm not sure that's even going to reach them. So can you give an idea of any other ways to reach the people who've been most impacted by the shut-offs?
Actually, this morning, I actually reached out to a group, and you're a part of that group, Mayor Marlin, to strategize. I'd like us, community-wide, to try to get together and strategize on how we can reach these individuals. I think we need to be creative and we need to be cohesive and collaborative in that effort. I'm hopeful that with the right people at the table, we can do a pretty good job. I think it will likely involve some maybe in-person outreach. Like you said, mailing if we have phone numbers. But I think we do have engaged individuals across the community that we're gonna do the best that we can to get those folks the help that they need.
Yeah, I think a more cohesive approach is critical because it's been piecemeal at this point. So, but, but we're headed in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you, Diane. I think I speak for other mayors and municipalities here that if there's any people, any folks from our municipalities that need help or just we're more than happy to work collaboratively, let us know what we might be able to do to reach the people in our communities.
And we have been reaching out directly to the municipalities. A new, additional piece that we've added is assistance for sewer, past due sewer bills.
Yes.
We're working with UCSD on some options for that. We've reached out directly to the Village of Rantoul and also to the Village of Mohammed to try to do some outreach with those that have past due bills. We are definitely reaching out and partnering with the municipalities.
Yes, I've seen that. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question. I was wondering, once you meet and you find out kind of who these families are, if there's any way, if I could find out if any of those families, Champaign families, have students in Champaign schools? Because we do have a group of our truancy interventionist advocate supports liaisons and so forth who have been making home visits. And if we have any students whose parents have lost power and might be affected by this, we can reach out to them personally and support them through whatever the application process is.
Katina, it sounds like you're somebody that would love to join our group and strategize.
I would indeed.
Good.
Invite me. But seriously, I mean, we have quite a few folks who have been, of course, boots on the ground, ensuring that they're delivering Chromebooks and hotspots and food and all sorts of things to many of our families who otherwise wouldn't be connected or engaged or even supported during this time. And so if any of those folks have kids in the district, you know, I think that would be a great opportunity to capitalize on some of the supports that we've been able to provide. So.
I will reach out to you and we'll keep you informed also. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Lisa, this is Mayor Smith of Rantoul. I'd like to be included in that list of light heap recipients and how to get the information to those people for help. So if you include me, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, we have been working very closely with your department and your utility department there in Village of Rantoul. We actually have a very close working relationship and have been even exploring potential outreach, blitz events in Rantoul if it's necessary. So we will definitely keep you informed.
Okay, I just established a human relations committee, and this would be a good trial test for them to reach out to people that are difficult to get in contact with. So I think we could be very effective at getting results.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seen none. Thank you, Lisa. Rita.
Good morning again. Let me go to this. Here. Give me a second here. I'll be providing the final update on the census. These are the final numbers for the census. They are not very encouraging for our area. The numbers are all below what we were, wanted to be, but these are the final numbers. These numbers, these numbers don't include the, we believe, because we couldn't get a final response from the census, don't include the numbers from the university. We believe that, but we haven't been able to get the final response from the census. Kudos to the Village of San Joe. They have 85% response rate. From there, this is the effort from RPC. We work with seven communities directly. We were able to assist with 417 forms. We coordinated with 32 different agencies. We hosted 123 events. And we have a complete count committee with 35 different representatives. And with the help that we provided, we were able to secure funding of over $700,000 per year. And when you multiply that for 10 years, is quite a good funding amount. This is with the efforts from what RPC did, working with the different agencies that we coordinated with. Then we also went ahead and compared the numbers with 2010. And I don't have very good news on that front. When you look at the numbers, when you compare the numbers 2010 with 2010, we were expecting to have better numbers, and that's not the case. As you can see, in Champaign County, we were down almost 2%. The city of Champaign was down almost 6%, and the city of Urbana was down almost 1%. Savoy was down almost 7%. San Joe, again, was up 4%, was in the lead. Rantoul was down almost 4%. But the most discouraging numbers were on the university district. And we can attribute this to the COVID pandemic. Again, we don't know if our numbers, and we are hoping that the numbers that we are providing at this time don't include the numbers provided by the university regarding the resident halls and all that. But we were not able to get responses from the census regarding that. But you can see the negative numbers that we are having there. Discouraging. Despite our efforts, but we are in a pandemic at this time. These are our final numbers.
Yes, Mayor Finan.
So do we actually have, like, population numbers? This is response rate numbers.
This is response rate numbers, yes. We know that based on the people who weren't, who were knocking doors from the census. What we have heard from the Census Bureau was that we had a 99.9 response rate from knocking doors. That means that all the people that was reach out, knocking doors, responds to the census questionnaire.
So we, but that still doesn't give me, like, total population for the city of Champaign?
No. We'll have, according to them, we'll have total population numbers by March.
Okay, and then my other question is, what's the process for the special census? Because we've done that before in Champaign, and I would think we need to start preparing for that immediately.
We have to wait. We have to wait until we get the numbers from the census. And once we get the numbers from the census and we go through the process of checking the numbers and checking the numbers against what we know and the information that we have, then we can start working with each of the agencies on getting prepared to have special census on. But at this time, it's premature to work on that. Then probably will be next year, probably after the summer, that we'll be able to do that.
Right, Mayor Marlin.
I just wanted to follow up on the issue of the students in university housing has, is the university hasn't been able to confirm they provided that information? Or the Census Bureau hasn't confirmed that they received it?
They provided that information. We don't know if the numbers that we are seeing on the website include that information. We haven't received confirmation about that specific request from anyone. The university doesn't know. We don't know. We have asked the census people, and they don't know. No one knows.
Right?
Okay.
Wow.
And we'll continue working on that and try to get straight answer, but we don't know.
And can we contact our senators or US representatives for assistance? Or is that beyond their reaches at this point?
I, I don't know. Probably the best would be for the university to contact directly the staff at the Census Bureau that received the information and see if they are able to get straight answer from them.
Okay.
All right.
We'll continue to work with the university, yes.
Thank you.
Because the numbers are discouraging.
Very. Very.
Yeah.
Yikes. All right.
Okay, one more thing, and because this is so negative, then I went and added a positive spin here. And this is CICART, and Mayor Smith will be happy about this. This is CICART ridership. If you may have heard, in general, in the United States, transit ridership has been down. And even in Champaign-Urbana, transit ridership, CUNTD ridership, has been down 70%. It started with 90% down, has been down recently 70%. Well, in Rantoul, and the connection between Champaign-Urbana and Rantoul, we have had a 25% increase in ridership. In the last quarter of fiscal year 20, that's April to June and the first quarter of '21, that's July to September. Significant increase in ridership in those routes. What is even more encouraging is that that increase has been on medical trips and work trips. Yes. This is the ridership increase between Champaign-Urbana and Rantoul. As you can see, the purple line is the increase in ridership that we have had on those trips, has been significant. That's encouraging because we know that all over the country, the ridership has been down. Aside from that, yes?
Yes, Rita, I just wanted to say that's reflective of the planning that we went through just about six to seven months ago.
That we changed.
Yes.
Yeah, we changed the routes. Yeah, we did surveys, we worked with the public and all that.
Yes.
Aside from that, just last Monday, we were notified, we applied for a rebuild Illinois grant, and we were awarded that grant. The funding amount was over $100,000. And the grant was to get a new replacement bus and also to install cameras inside and outside the buses, which is great because we have had some incidents with buses. Then having cameras will help in terms of safety. And also, we were able to sign a new contract with the Village of Rantoul that started November 1st. And due to the pandemic, we just signed the contract for one year. And knowing that there has been problems in terms of the MFT money that they are getting, and they use that funding to pay for the contract, we didn't increase the funding amount for the contract. But at the same time, we have been working with two different organizations, the Payette County Mental Health and Parkland College, to try to have other contracts to help these two agencies on providing transportation services for them. We are hoping to be able to have contract with them to provide transportation services for them, particularly with Parkland College, because we have found out, working through WEOWA, that there are some students that have, that are having difficulties on accessing classes in Parkland due to the pandemic. Then this will provide some additional funding that will allow us to expand the service and cover the deficits that we have at this time because we are not charging riders for the fares to use the service. Then this is the positive spin, knowing that we have bad news from the census. Any questions?
No, but the good news is welcome. I can tell you that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Rita. Next, Justin Arnold, Workforce Development. Hey, Justin.
Morning, morning, commissioners. As you all know, I came on board in July. What I looked at was that Betty and Lisa had spent years putting together really strong boards, and Rita had worked with those boards over a period of time to develop a regional plan. And so I thought to myself, how can I build off the work that these folks have already done? And the obvious thing to do was to pull out of the regional plan with those boards' goals for 2021 and 2022. So me and the CEO Board, L-Web Board, and One Stop Partners, over the past three, four months, have had discussions about what those goals should be. We ended up identifying sector partnerships, talent pipeline management, career pathways, and apprenticeships as some major things that we wanted to tackle next year. And those were approved by both boards this past week and integrated. And those were approved by both boards this past week and integrated into our regional Wyoa policy. So I'm looking forward to working with those boards next year on those topics and making an impact in Champaign, in those workforce areas. Besides that, that was kind of the big push. Besides that, just so you all know, I was asked to attend the University of Illinois's Call to Action to Address Racism and Social Injustice. There are several working committees. This comes from Chancellor Jones. One of the working committees has a subcommittee on workforce development. Me and one other person were asked to represent the community on workforce development. The process with the University of Illinois in this Call to Action to Address Racism and Social Injustice is to have two community partners work with two university specialists on their topic and discuss it over the next couple of months. And then the community is going to respond to some of the proposals that the subcommittees are making. So I just bring that up to this group to say, if you have ideas about racism and social injustice as it affects workforce development, I'd be a good person to have a conversation with so that I can bring those ideas to this working group and try and make an impact in these areas in our community. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Justin? All right. Yes, Dennis.
Yeah, Justin. Yeah, hi. Yeah, I'll probably have a conversation with you in the future on a topic that I'd like to promote.
Sure.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yep. I'm going to send you my email in the chat.
Pardon me?
I'm going to send you my email in the chat.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yep.
All right. Do we have a motion to accept and place on file the Division Updates for Fiscal, Human Resources, Community Services, Planning and Community Development, and Workforce Development? Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second.
Second by?
Smith.
Smith, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk call the roll?
Dykstra. Marlin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Brulein Bogus.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Boss. Roberts.
Yes.
Finan. Kyles. Wiltshire.
Yes.
And Alguin. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the CEO Management Report presented orally by Dr. Sulamoyo.
Thank you, Chair, and I will be brief. Let me begin by, first of all, wishing you a happy birthday. But tomorrow, so if we could wish here a happy birthday.
No singing.
And then secondly, I'd like to also thank you for your leadership this year as you've chaired the Regional Planning Commission. Unfortunately, we've been dealing with this pandemic, but I want to express my gratitude on behalf of the staff for your leadership in working with myself and with the rest of the commissioners in shepherding the organization through this very challenging and tumultuous time. So thank you so much for your service. I also want to thank the Commissioners. You have truly been a great support for the staff and for myself as we have pivoted as an organization dealing with this very challenging time. As you've heard from the various reports provided by the Division Directors, our organization has clearly been on the front lines of addressing this pandemic. We, even though the governor had issued a stay-at-home order back in March, we have continued to be on the front lines of this pandemic as we have been deemed as essential workers. And so knowing that the needs of our community have not in any way been reduced due to this pandemic, but in most cases been elevated. And the fact that we have been seeing a lot of individuals that have not, in the past, sought assistance from our organization coming through our doors. We're truly blessed to have the Regional Planning Commission as an organization that can provide that level of assistance to this community. So to that end, I want to thank the staff. You know, as Human Resources Director pointed out, just earlier this week, we had an all-agency meeting that was attended by over 100 of our staff, where we shared various reports in terms of what we have been doing in addressing this pandemic since March. And it was pretty uplifting because we, typically, we have these meetings in person. But obviously, we couldn't do that, and this was done virtually. But it was a great opportunity for us to bring our staff together, knowing that we've all been working in different capacities. Others are working virtually, others are in person. As we speak, we have members of the community coming through to get lie heap assistance. And so this was a tremendous opportunity to bring our staff together and just to hear all of the work that we have been doing on behalf of this community. So I want to really extend my gratitude and appreciation to all of the RPC staff, but more specifically to my senior management team. We meet constantly to strategize as things keep changing in our environment and how we can best respond to the various demands and needs that we have for the programs that we are blessed to provide services through to the community. Lastly, the, wanted to share with you that I also, as a matter of fact, yesterday, had some very productive meetings with our two members of Congress, Congressman Johnson, because who's obviously retiring. And then also had a very productive conversation with Congressman Rodney Davis. This was an opportunity for me to share with our members of Congress what the Regional Planning Commission has been doing, particularly with the CARES funding that we have, that we received that was appropriated by Congress to address the various issues related to COVID-19. And so there are probably going to be some other opportunities, you know, here in the next few weeks for some additional support that we may be part of in helping, continuing to help our community. So I just want to, again, thank you all. I want to wish you a happy Thanksgiving next week. And if we don't meet again, happy holidays and thank you so much for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Dr. Sulamoyo. On behalf of the Commission, I want to thank Delitzo and Debbie and all of the RPC staff for, it was such a pleasure to work with you all, and you've done just an amazing job through this tough time. So thank you from us. Is there any old business? Seeing none. Is there any new business? Seeing none. Is there any other business before us? All right, seeing none, I will declare us adjourned and happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Stay safe.